Six minutes have been donated from Stephen Mack. Okay, I see you, sir.
Thank you.
You have six minutes.
Failure of the Book Review Committee, which I sit on for District Two. We have a broken book review process to remove books. We need the process to allow books to be, uh, we need the process to allow books to be age and subject appropriate. One community member, one review committee, disqualify review committee members who don't have the will to be objective to either allow or disallow books according to content. I hope the superintendent will just pull all the books and end the corrupt and misuse process now. Uh, there's a difference between the school district choosing books for the library and the many titles donated without review that are now contained in the library. Those are the books that should be immediately removed. There are some very inappropriate books that are on the shelves of our school libraries. How did they manage to get there? Publisher donations without an in-house review for compliance of state statute eight four seven point zero one two. Here's my inside view for the book review committee, from, from the, of the book review committee. Although the makeup is meant, excuse my eyes, they're a little. Okay, although the makeup is meant for one member from each district and the three, and three from the school administration, we have multiple instances, instances of a single community representative sitting in up to three committees per their own admission during the process. Are the same three school representatives also on more than one review committee? That's a question I don't have the answer to. I don't know, but they too should be restricted to one review committee. Folks in, in, folks in committee conversations have bragged and have, and I have confirmed to be true that these multiple committee members do sit in multiple seats, which takes away from the, the community at large for representation. They also undermine the intent of discerning what the standards should be. I've experienced at the review in admission to comments, all twelve criteria violate statute intended to protect the students. These include profanity, sexual behavior, drugs, alcohol, brutality, violence, uh, uh, abhorrent behavior. Manner characteristics are presented in context, language, cruelty, political positions, and religious or portrayal of religious practices and ideology that do often offend. Still, many continue to override the common sense decision of the application of those terms and approve books to, to be included. The implementation of the process is backwards and used to, used to slowly allow all and any of the questionable titles not subject to parental consent. As a result, quality literature is surrounded by more salacious literature that, that appeal to a lower, lower moral standard. It's not maximizing student choice to choose the higher level of works with literary skills from authors with, from which they can grow. Temptation over education is the net result. This is also, this also circumvents parental rights. We could try to fix the process, or we could just remove the books not properly placed in inventory. Anyone who then wants to could request a review to enter a book into the system rather than to remove it because there are too many titles that don't meet the statute's criteria. It's the opt-in to enter the system that protects our parents and students from many of these books. Adversely, to have parental control of what their children are given, available to read, taken away because of the inclusion, so a far worse example with opt-out, not knowing what the library holds. It's impossible to task parents and students to be subject to, uh, to foreign literature content chosen by other interests that are not responsible to the parents, as only a parent can be. Books need to be completely removed that don't meet the higher standard, as discussed in the ruling from Hill, Hillsborough County Court case that was just ruled to remove questionable books. Then we need to also tag all books that have entered the school libraries without review. I could go on, but what is, what this comes down to is we don't need money spent on lawsuits. The book review is corrupt and designed to be slow. It's also up to the authority, it's up to the authority given to our school superintendent, whom I respect greatly, um, who I support and take, uh, I, I ask to support and take the next step. Also, a copy of this will be given to you after the meeting, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Paula Montgomery. You have three minutes.
Thank you. We have the idea of community values that gets bandied about that I hear. And especially when we're talking about books, whether or not to keep them or to remove them. And it seems to me that using the book review committees is a barometer of those values. You have people from the community who sit on these committees. Some people think this area is solid conservative. Uh, currently, if you're paying attention, you'll realize that we're not a divided community, but we are a thoroughly mixed community. There are people with passion about both conservative and liberal ideas. The opt-out action for parents who want to avoid certain books, or certain classes of books even, uh, takes care of a lot of the problems, as I see it. The system we have now is working in that it resent, it represents, um, and respects the mixture that we have in our, in our county. Uh, I know it's slow, it's painfully slow, and we're getting impatient with it. But to do things right, you have to have patience. Permitting each parent to examine, to express his or her own values by opting out and using the community committees to make a general barometer for our community values seems to me to be working. Or restricting and removing, or keeping books and, it, it's working to keep the books or not keep the books in a fair and equitable manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'm Mr. Aaron Snyder. You have six minutes. It's Aaron Snyder. And you have three minutes donated.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Good evening, Board and Superintendent. Haven't really wanted to come here for a while because firstly, the whole issue of, of the books is just aggravating beyond anything I can imagine, uh, because I don't give pornography to kids. So, talking to people about giving sexually erotic books to kids, it just makes my head want to explode. But, um, so I, I would move more to, I would ask you all to vote to abolish all the public schools in Escambia County, because if, if we can't be adults or parents, I don't, again, I don't give pornography and erotic books to kids. I'm not going to go up on the street and say, here's some erotica. Would you like to read about this guy sleeping with his mom? So, then we have these books, and we're supposed to accept everyone. So what is the accepting? The accepting is, this guy wants to sleep with his mom, and then when I read that, then I can care about my neighbor. And that's the lie of the devil that everyone keeps saying. This gives you empathy. So when I read smut, it's supposed to make me care about people. Where, where are our brains? We, we know better. You, you all are a little bit older than me, but we know better. None of our parents taught us that, because they weren't teaching us garbage. So, you know, one thing I would like to ask you all, just on a personal note, because it's the devil, is this preview, this like, no disparaging remarks before you speak, that's the devil. That was never happening. So now we're saying that three or four times before a speaker gets up? I, I don't like that. I, I think we could do better. I think that just takes people to decide, you know what, I'm gonna risk my whole life to do something about this. Just gonna risk everything. Don't care. And if you're not willing to do that, then Christ has called us to do that, plain and simple. There, there's a cost to being a Christian. It can cost you everything. So what's the point? I'm a Christian, but there's no cost. I just do what I feel like, or bow down to Studer. So, excuse me for some of that.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, that was true, though. So, we, we can do better. We, we can make some waves about things that are true. Apologize for the Studer remark. We, we can make some waves to do what we know is right. We're adults. So, brushing this away, we need to move on to education. There's no education if people are walking in, they're able to look at a book. There's no way for any child to know, when they go into these libraries, they don't know what's going to be in those books. It's a minefield. They have no way of knowing. So you can say opt-out, still no way of knowing. You can go pick, pick up a book that looks, that has daisies on the front of it. Inside, it's about girls sleeping with, together. So what are we gonna do? Bible says to be doers of God's word and not hearers only. You know, the Bible talks to us about poking our eyeballs out. So if we're supposed to poke our eyeballs out, Jesus said to gouge your eyeball out instead of lust. So, it seems to be pretty serious to God. What are we gonna do? We have to actually make a decision to do something. So, I, I appreciate it. Appreciate you all letting me speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, three minutes, Larry Downs.
Larry Downs, Junior Plumbing LLC, because fecal matters. All right, let's get it on. All right, what I got here is a, uh, it looks like a doctor's, uh, bag, but this is all vaccine insert sheets from the vaccine manufacturers of your favorite MMR II by Merck, Comerity, Spike Vax, all that garbage. And it is garbage. But I just want parents who may be watching this to know that they don't have to chemically inject their children. Corporate chemical injections called vaccines, they don't have to do it, they can go to the, to go to the school, to go to any of our public schools, and go to the health department, and go to missionobvious.com, which is my website, and they'll see me go through the whole process, just to show them how. They can get their exemption. You believe we gotta have an exemption for freedom? That should, that should be the default setting, right? Uh, you know, I think y'all are still sending my son, uh, vaccine updates for my granddaughter. She's eight, about to be nine. She's not gonna get them, and I'm waiting for y'all to go up there and say, snatch her out of school, because she ain't gonna have the exemption either. No form. She's just gonna keep on going until somebody snatches her out. Now, we're paying for the schooling, so I don't think y'all got a right to do that. And I hope more parents wake up to that fact. But, uh, also, I want to make a public records request right here. According to chapter 119, Public Records Act, State of Florida, I can do this. I would like to get all information, data, costs for the food that's provided to the kids, whether it be vending machines or food in the cafeteria, all food. I want to know how much we're spending, I want to know who we're buying it from, and I want to know if y'all know what's in it. All right. Uh, as far as the books go, get the books out. If you wouldn't read it to your six-year-old, seven-year-old granddaughter, grandson, if y'all wouldn't do that, get it out. Donate them all to the public library. They can all go get it, they can go get it right there. They don't need to get it in our school. That way, at least a parent has to take them somewhere, instead of this opt-out nonsense. Uh, let me see. The conservative and liberal. Y'all hear that? Seems like that the liberals are more con, are more liberal with our money. I don't want to pay for this garbage. I don't want to pay for these books that are garbage. I believe they're garbage. Basic, basic education doesn't include, include learning how to do sex acts. With gays, lesbians, straights, don't matter. That's not part of the education.
Thank you.
Thank you much.
Our next speaker, Mr. Rick Holesneck. You have three minutes.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Ms. Odom, Mr. Superintendent, good evening. We've got a huge window of opportunity as leaders here in Escambia County School District to do the right thing. Um, it appears that our new Florida Attorney General, James Uthmeyer, is not messing around when it comes to the enforcement of Florida statutes and the protection of our children. He is not messing around. That shouldn't surprise us, because we have a governor who's not messing around either. We have a governor that does have a problem firing a prosecutor for not enforcing the law or removing school board members for not doing their jobs. You all have no doubt read the letter that he sent to Hillsborough County, to the school board, to the superintendent, uh, and he's not messing around at all. He says things like this. "The school board bears the affirmative obligation to remove these materials and others like them, not only from the classrooms, but from the libraries." And he wants it done immediately. Some people learn by touching a hot stove. I have one of those in my house. The other ones are smarter, and they're like you. You don't need to touch the hot stove on this. If the laser beam of attention was on you right now and not Hillsborough County, what would you do? Let me tell you what Hillsborough County did. They removed three hundred and eighty-nine thousand books. Three hundred and eighty-nine thousand. Because, listen, we listen to people like Vicki Baggett every month, every week.
No personal attack.
Oh, excuse me, sorry, it's not an attack, I mean, this is.
But just, just do not use the name.
Okay, sorry.
It's, it's, it's fine, it's, it's fair comment.
Okay, okay, I mean, she's working so hard to, to put the spotlight on stuff that is here in violation of the law. Now we have the Attorney General agreeing with her and agreeing with you. This stuff needs to go, and it needs to go now. By contrast, to my knowledge, since you're, you took, uh, your ten, tenure a year ago, this month, as interim, we have removed one book. One book. It was a four-four tie, broken by people appointed by the board, uh, and we've removed one book. Hills, uh, we have three books that Hillsborough was directed to remove, and they're on the docket for review by the book review committee. Get the low-hanging fruit, pull the books that have already been directed to be pulled, and others like it. And then, as you mentioned in the workshop, sir, from District Two, apply the same laws to the library as to the classroom and do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker we have is Darziah Warren. You have three minutes.
Good evening to the Chair, to the Board, to the Superintendent. I'm glad you're feeling a little bit better. Last Thursday, I was not able to attend, uh, the workshop, and I hadn't had a chance to, um, view the workshop. Um, I received a call from WEAR on Monday, and they wanted to, um, discuss the proposal of increasing the superintendent's salary by fifty-five thousand. I recognize that the superintendent is deserving of a raise, and I don't think anyone in this district would disagree with that. What your employees are asking is why so much? I understand that that was a state recommendation, but the law also said that we needed to get to forty-seven-five, which we could not do overnight. It was a gradual climb for us, but we finally got there. You have a lobby employees who are working two, sometimes three jobs to make ends meet. A couple of weeks ago, I spoke on WEAR about us being ranked fifty-fourth in the state in, for average teacher salary. We have been told constantly that it's going to be difficult for us this year because of the decline in student enrollment. We've been talking to employees about, you know, the money might not be there. Teachers and support staff have been giving, given this reason, and they've been told that they no longer have a job at some of our schools because of the loss in some of these units, because of the decrease that we're projected to have. It's going to cause possibly larger class sizes. We're looking at bus drivers, they're already making double backs. So, what I would like for this Board to consider as we prepare to go to the table to negotiate salaries, that the Board will remember that your employees are looking for you to take care of them also. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Melanie Eubanks, three minutes.
Thank you. After last Thursday's workshop, sometimes it's not what you say, it's what you didn't say about removing pornography. The Board and the Superintendent were asked about finding a different review process to remove filth from our media owners. Everyone was silent. The media specialist was brought up about talking about opting in and opting out. It's not working. And we have this obscene sexually explicit material in the libraries. The Board and the Superintendent have made it obvious, it's just too much pressure to set community standards. The risk is too great. Whose report are you believing? Who will you offend? Who will you not offend? On Thursday, a reference was made to Nehemiah in rebuilding the wall, and it has taken longer than it took Nehemiah to rebuild the wall for him to rebuild our schools. It's because you're a greater institution than yourself, and you're part of a much bigger establishment. However, I remind you, Nehemiah did not put himself in a position of compromise. He was concerned with pleasing God, not man. Here's the question. Why are these books that represent the image of a person or portion of the human body, which depicts nudity, sexual conduct, sexual excitement, sexual battery, bestiality, I can't even say the next one, the sad old mass success abuse, and that which is harmful to minors, still in our schools? Why do we not allow harmful content to minors? Why do we have that? There's no reason for it. I urge you to eradicate these pornographic books. The Superintendent, along with the media specialist, need to follow the law. They together can remove them. The sexualization of our children needs to stop. Truthfully, pornographic literature is not appropriate for any age, including all adults. Pornograph, pornograph, I can't even say it. It's addictive. It destroys men, women, boys, girls, families. It is not, we don't need to introduce this into our schools and provide it. Let's obey the law and remove them, not because you're going to be forced, but because it's in your heart to do what's right. There are higher authorities, and if we don't listen, I pray that it will listen. The school board might want to reconsider what was suggested by one of the school board members last week to do something different. The committees aren't working. People who, um, don't agree with them, they're not represented well. If you read the comments on the forum, you'll see that. And last Thursday, it was demonstrated in this room that you're not against the pornography. And if you're not against it, then you're for it. You have to speak up.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Vicki Baggett. You have six minutes. And you had three donated from Garry Baggett. Garry Baggett? Okay.
Good evening. By now, you have all read the scathing letter that our Attorney General sent to Hillsborough County School Board and Superintendent, reminding them that their duty to protect our children means adhering to state guidelines regarding instructional materials for all students. In this letter, he gives specific instruction, specific, he gives specific passages from material considered patently pornographic, writing that, quote, "The school board bears the affirmative obligation to remove these materials and others like them, not only from the classroom, but from the libraries." And he wants it done right now. The one phrase, though, that he never uses is something that our review committees love to say, and that is, taken as a whole. Instead, he reminded the Board that, quote, "These materials expose students to harm and lack any legitimate academic purpose, and that they must act immediately to rectify the problem." He even quotes from three books that are currently on our list of books to be reviewed, even though they obviously violate the law and should have never been made available to minors to begin with. Listen to this passage from What Girls Are Made Of, a book that I submitted in September of twenty-twenty-two. It's already been pulled from other counties in this state. It's about a girl's experience with a vibrator. Is this educationally appropriate, Mr. Leonard, or board members? "I let my knees splay open and find my slit with my fingers. The soft hooded nub at its apex, and I guide the red rubber ball against it. My back arches, and I hiss in a breath at its first wonderful, terrible contact. The rest is about remembering Seth's tongue doing the same thing." What about this passage would require this book to go through a review committee? He shares a passage from a book called Beautiful, which the Attorney General also advised Hillsborough County to immediately remove. Guess what? I submitted this book in October of twenty-twenty-two. Again, there it waits to go through a so-called review committee. Let's listen to this passage specifically from the AG's letter. "He knows what it feels like to be on top of me that I don't move, but I am small and thin and pliable, but my breasts are perfect size for his hand. Does it hurt? Does it feel good?" he asked me. "I would not be traumatized if he died on top of me, his shrinking, shriveling dick still inside of me." Let's look at another one that the AG mentioned called Breathless, which I submitted in September of twenty-two as well. "I let him kiss my breast. Next, my panties come off all at once, both legs at the same time, and he's looking at my body. He's getting a condom. Now you can feel him, all of him, and there's the surprise again. Not pain necessarily, but the surprise of my body registering something entirely new." Since our review committees have started back up, only one book has been completely removed, and that was the one where the paid district members could not vote because of the tie. So the community had to break the tie. Mr. Leonard and board members, you should be very concerned that we have district employees who are voting to keep this mess in front of our students. Very concerned. Our Attorney General obviously is. You should be as well. We have had school administrators, librarians, who have ordered this inappropriate content in the first place, and some teachers have voted to keep it. Our review committees are flawed. They are being instructed to skip over the sexual content. As a matter of fact, in the so-called notes that the district media specialist sends to me, members admit that there's sexual content, but that it is necessary to the theme, or taken as a whole, the sexual content doesn't matter, because the kids are already exposed to this. Hardly ever is the law even mentioned, except for some people. Our district is in the hot seat. I promise you, the new Attorney General and Commissioner of Education are monitoring. I promise you, the new Attorney General and Commissioner of Education are monitoring what we are and are not doing. Why haven't we already removed every book that has been removed from other counties in our state? I have gone through these lists. Currently, we have 235 books to be reviewed. If we make the smart move, we would have only 88 books to look at. And of those 88, around 90% have extreme sexual passages with things like suck my cock and make a wish, put honey all over my balls and pecker, or what a tight little sugary cunt she has. Those are passages from books that in the past two weeks, review committees have voted to keep in our schools. I am giving you a book tonight. I've already sent it to you. Help yourself. It's already on the state list. Please do what's right, remove this stuff. Currently, we have 45 books on the Resolved Challenges list. Of those books, all have already been on the state list, with the exception of 12. This is not being proactive, it's being counterproductive. The time has come for you to do what you know to be right. When you are lukewarm in your actions, you're only usable to those who are determined to alter the morals of our children. Do what is right, especially if you have Jesus in your heart you have an obligation to. Thank you.
Yeah, no more speakers.